I'll go ahead and call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 20, 2025. It's now 6:30 PM. Present this evening are Commissioners Ned Hacker, Pete Risto, Jake Pearson, Aaron Hildreth, Katie Rogers, and myself, Michael Richards. Excused tonight is Commissioner Peter Kling. From staff, we have Zach Smallwood, David Rogers, Ruth Ruach, Chad Wilkinson, and Mark Richardson. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please silence it. This meeting is being recorded for public record. Glad to have those of you who are here tonight with us to participate in the meeting. Just a couple items to remind you of. When the time comes to make a comment on the agenda item, we ask that you speak into the microphone and state your name and your address for the record. Once your item, you are here for is over. You're welcome to leave. We just ask you to do so quietly. All right, let's jump into our business items. The first one is normally approval of minutes, but we don't have any minutes tonight, so we'll move on to conflicts of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest for tonight?
No.
No.
Thank you. Approval of findings of fact, agenda item number three. There are four of them: Ivory Foundation, Woodward Enterprises, Utah Boat Brokers, Afton and Afton England. Have all the Commissioners had a chance to review the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections that we need to make?
No.
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 Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion for the Commission to approve the findings of fact for Ivory Foundation, site plan review, Woodward Construction, design review, Utah Boat Broker, conditional use permit, Afton England subdivision amendment.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hurst to approve the findings of fact for Ivory Foundation, Woodward Construction, Utah Boat Broker, and Afton England. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The findings of fact have been approved. Agenda item number four is the approval of the 2026 meeting dates. Have all the Commissioners had a chance to review the meeting dates, and are we okay with those?
Yes.
Yes.
Just all in favor, say aye. Wait, hold on. That was a question. So let's have a motion then from one of you.
Chair, I motion to approve the meeting dates for 2026.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers to approve the meeting dates for 2026. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Pearson. All right, agenda item number five. This is a conditional use permit.
We need a vote.
Sorry?
We need a vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote. Ruth, are you taking the vote, the roll call?
Yes. Yep. Did you make the motion?
Was it just an aye?
I'm confused.
It's okay. Clearly.
It's all right. So you made the motion in the second, but you didn't do all in favor, say aye. Oh, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now you can move on. And now we'll do a vote.
No.
No vote?
No, now we're going with that one.
We can move on to agenda item number five. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, everyone. All right, agenda item number five, Beyond Creation Institute, and Ruth is presenting. Is the applicant here? I think I saw her. Is the applicant here? That's you, right? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, Ruth.
Thank you. So here we have a conditions permit application submitted by Beyond Creation Institute for a Reiki business at 4764 South 900 East Suite 1. So the subject property is highlighted here in blue. It's situated between 900 East and Van Winkle Expressway. It's also south of the Ivy Place Shopping Center. It's located in the CD Commercial Development Zone, where Reiki is designated as a conditional use. As you can see from the site plan and floor plan, this is a pretty simple request. The applicant is just taking up space in existing building and doesn't propose modifying the building. The access point would be from 900 East, which is highlighted in red, and three parking stalls are required for this use, and the site exceeds that requirement. So staff did find that the application meets all other applicable requirements and recommends that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow a Reiki business at 4764 South 900 East Suite 1, subject to these eight conditions, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, let's... Thank you, Ruth. Can the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record?
So don't my business address or my home address?
Your home's fine.
Okay. So Dorley Olds, 1390 East, 4705 South, number 2 Mill Creek, Utah 84117.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to read the conditions, and are you able to comply with them?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
If you have any questions, I'd happy to answer questions for you.
Do we have questions? I thought we had a question earlier.
You know, I was just curious. What is Reiki? Sorry, is that something?
Reiki, so that's a Japanese word. It was developed in Japan in the 1920s, and Rei meaning, like the spirit of God, and Ki meaning your own energy. And the best definition is it's kind of like a spiritual, and it's an energy massage where the person gets on the massage table, but they don't need to take any of their clothing off, just their shoes, and you're working with their arc field to help strengthen that field through the energy. So that's the best way is to experience it, because it's hard to describe.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back for any discussion that we might have. Okay, if there isn't any discussion amongst the Commissioners, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit to allow a Reiki business at 4764 South 900 East Suite 1, subject to the conditions as laid out here.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hacker that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit to allow a Reiki business at 4764 South 900 East Suite 1, subject to the eight conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Hurst. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. The motion is passed. Good luck. All right, moving right along to our agenda item number six. This is a general plan amendment, legislative action. This is the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan, and I think Mark is presenting, right? And David, are you both?
I'm gonna do a quick introduction.
Okay, David's gonna do a quick introduction.
So yes, this is the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan, which will become a portion of the Murray City General Plan, and it is amending a previously adopted small area plan that was put together by Voda Landscape and Planning. And so I'm happy to turn it over to Mark Morris, who was the lead consultant on this project, who's gonna give you a thorough presentation of the station area plan.
Thank you. I just steal your HDMI.
Welcome back, Mark.
Thank you. Good to be back. I appreciate the time tonight. Let's see if this connects.
You have handouts?
There we go. Okay, we got there. Okay, great. It's good to be back in front of you to talk a little bit about the future. As David mentioned, the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan was adopted by Murray City in 2021. With recent state legislation, every city with a fixed rail station on the public transit system is required to have a station area plan. So this process that we've been through for the last few months, we started in about July, working through updates to this plan, working with allied partners, working with agencies and other entities in order to come into compliance with what the state requires for those state station area plans. In this plan, as I'm sure you have seen, there is an entire chapter on implementation with a focus on catalytic projects for this particular neighborhood in the city. We can look at any of those and talk through those, but the implementation is a portion that the state required a lot more information than what a small area plan might entail. During this coordination process, we worked with what we call an in-house steering committee. So we had planning staff, community development staff, representatives from UTA, representative from Mid Bell City, the WFRC, who was underwriting the project, a member of the Planning Commission. Aaron joined us for those discussions as well, and a representative from the City Council. So that group, again, we met twice a month for a few months to work through specific questions and what are the, you know, what's the direction we want to head with these. I caught the tail end of your discussion earlier about kind of as a planning document, what we're doing is to kind of identify what happens next. And so the intent here is to map out in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years, what are the steps that need to happen in order for any of this to come to fruition? In addition, we met directly with UTA staff and UDOT staff to talk about their part in all of this. When we look at the implementation matrix, you'll see there are some things that the champion will definitely come from this body or Murray City representative. UDOT and UTA, there are projects that they will kind of take the lead, and everyone will work together to accomplish those. We also had discussions and feedback from the Fashion Place Mall management team. They were involved with that 2020 project and small area plan. We've checked in with them to kind of talk about what's their thoughts about the future of the mall site, and the things that we've got in this plan are very much in line with the direction that they're heading with their hopes and dreams for them all. And in addition to that, during that 2020 project, we went through what we call a full public process of open house, online survey. This project was very much in the depths of COVID, and so I have a little bit of trauma response to this project. But a lot of that, we've kind of transitioned from having a lot of in-person discussions to it going all online. And so we found that we actually got a lot of great responses because a lot of it was an online survey, and everyone was at home. So we got some good input during that process. The vision, as you've seen in the document, I would say the focus is on context sensitivity, making sure that there's no one-size-fits-all solution for this neighborhood. It's quite a large area. And so in every part of the plan, we've broken down into smaller subareas within the project as far as recommendations for density and land use types and so forth. The implementation chapter, as I mentioned, we've got this matrix that kind of maps out, here are some smaller tasks. If we are going to do something big, how do we break it down into a task? Who's in charge of doing that? Who are the partners that we're going to need to have in the room in order for that to happen? And like I mentioned, a lot of this is focused on catalytic projects. This area is a large, large area. There are many hundreds of property owners. These catalytic projects, we identified to say, here are the things that could really make a big difference as far as encouraging more development or encourage change in infrastructure and so forth. So that chapter, I'd say, is one that wasn't present at all in the small area plan. We had a small discussion of implementation in the summary, but the implementation chapter is brand new to this document. Are there any questions I can answer or anything you wanted to talk through as far as the plan itself or its vision or intent?
I'll ask a question since someone else is.
Yeah, of course.
So the changes that were made to this from what it was previous, it's mostly what we're looking at on the screen, right? The implementation?
I would say this is probably the biggest change from the small area plan. The rest of the plan, a lot of it was going through and updating like data and information. I mean, five years have passed since then, and so we're updating demographic data and so forth. Market conditions are certainly different from what they were in 2020, but the implementation chapter, and there's a whole chapter on vision, those are new to this plan. But the entire plan has been updated. I wouldn't say massive changes. It's really just updating the underlying assumptions to be more current.
Okay. What about, I know you're not, I mean, I don't remember seeing any specific zones called out, right? There was no specific zones called out here, or were there?
As far as in future land use?
Yeah.
So we've got a kind of a future land use map, but I think the underlying discussion was the areas that are kind of where these catalytic projects are, the city would develop a mixed-use zone that was specific to that area. So if, for example, the mall comes to stand in front of you and says, we have visions, and they line up with what's, you know, what's in this document, the city could implement a zone specific to the Fashion Place Mall site.
So, okay, so is that what it's tied? I don't know if it spells that out in these steps, or does it, and I'm missing it. Because it talks about, it says establish vision for mixed-use site approach and updates the zoning regulation. It doesn't say create a new, because it would be a new zone, right? Or would it not be a new zone?
It would be a new zone. It would be, you have other parts of the city that have mixed-use zones. We can certainly have a little bit more detail there to say, here's, you know, here's the type of zone that would be recommended. But the second one, there are updates to zoning regulation along State Street. We kind of said along State Street because you would probably want to do something that applies to both sides, not just the mall site.
Okay. Yeah, I don't even know if we need detail on what the zone would look like, but I don't think we called out that we want to do a new zone. Or did I miss that?
We can get into more specifics there in the matrix that just say, here's a project to say the city can update the zoning there. I think zoning is a key tool that the city has complete control over. You don't have to go to UDOT or UTA or anybody. And so I think as far as like who's gonna kind of light the, you know, light the fire under this project, the city can, you know, approach the mall management and say, hey, we'd like to talk about a rezone. What should we do?
Yeah, okay.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a few questions after the fact. I hope we don't get mad. I probably could have asked these in the immediate means in hindsight, but...
Yeah, no, it's great.
I just heard about UDOT's, oh, sorry, UDOT's objections to the bridge project. And that just got me thinking. I know there's what a dozen or so kind of agencies across that are part of this. Do we have like written memos or statements from them that kind of detail any support, objections, anything like that?
As far as, specific to the Winchester Bridge?
Not that bridge, but the whole project. Because I mean, what, UTA's in there, the Storewater folks, I wrote down a list. I've got the Fashion Place Mall, of course, the RDA guys, Mount Olympus Improvement District. So are we in active conversations with all those agencies?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we don't have anything formal that they say we endorse this plan, but we've shown them and said, here are the things that we would like UDOT's involvement with, and they were very supportive to say, yes, these all are perfectly fine. There were no red flags as far as they're concerned.
Okay.
But yeah, there's nothing formalized. They wouldn't be one of the entities that would formally adopt this plan. UTA would formally adopt it as a station area plan. The WFRC would also formally adopt it, but UDOT doesn't necessarily, I don't know that I've heard of them adopting a plan in a formal way.
Okay. As I understand it, we don't have any like anchor developers, anything like that? No one's expressed direct interest in building anything specific at this time?
No, no. I think the only one that, you know, we've talked with UTA several times. They have some of the parcels around the station itself. They own about five acres of land. So listing this track station area redevelopment, UTA would probably want be the lead in kind of kicking something like this off. Where Murray City owns zero acres, and they own five acres, working with them, they have, you know, specific goals as well as far as transit-oriented development goes. But they have, as you can see, they've got a lot of surface parking lot. They have a lot of other land around the platform that could kind of kick it off. So they would be, I'd say, your kind of prime developer around the platform itself. And then the mall management would be, you know, that would be up to them as far as how quickly they want to go there.
Okay. Another question I had, I don't know if this is better for you or staff. One concern I had, again, in hindsight, I don't know why these didn't come up to my head when I was in these meetings, but parking spillover, like if this area gets developed, these buildings get denser. Is there any kind of zoning parking or something to protect the residential parking? Because I know up in Salt Lake, sometimes you go to these events, you're parking in someone's front yard, which is real awkward, right?
Sure. Yeah.
Is that a problem we foresee?
No, we have included in one of the tasks around the, specific to the redevelopment around the station area, to do like a parking study, a market study, this third, this third one down here, you know, if there is redevelopment. UTA, you know, in talking to them, building on their park and ride, they say, well, we have to replace the park and ride if we are going to build on it. And it was, well, is it stall for stall? Is it, and UTA, I guess, there are many people that all have varying opinions. And so I think going through a development process, there would be a parking study to say, okay, how do we mitigate parking spillover into the neighborhoods around it?
Is that something that's currently planned? And like, my brain is in executor mode, right? So I'm just seeing how we actually execute this vision. So is this currently in plan, or is this something that would happen if other things happened first?
I think it would be something where Murray City would go to UTA and say, okay, your representative said I'm on board. Who do we talk to to kind of start that process? Because there are several steps there. UTA is not a developer. They own land, and so they would have a development partner as well. But they would go through a market study and a parking study as well. So their representative very much said, okay, here are some subtasks we would want to have in that implementation matrix.
Okay. My last question, promise. And I think it's probably going to be a very similar answer then with that answer. The utilities up there, do you currently handle all that? Or is another study going to need to be done for that?
Oh, I think a good bet would be that the infrastructure would need to be updated just because we're going from pretty spread out, single-story development to multi-story. You'd have a lot of infrastructure updates.
Okay. I think that's my question. Thank you.
So I have one question real quick. So this is, when this is all done and signed, sent to the state, correct?
Well, UTA will adopt it as an official station area plan and the WFRC as well. So it's not necessarily any state entities other than, I mean, UTA is a state entity.
I'm curious also, is it sent out to, you know, Murray residents in any form, you know, summarize like this is what we're doing? Is that something we normally do, or we don't do that because that's not what we do? I'm just curious if the public, this is something the public would want.
Sure, yeah. Zach's gonna speak to that.
So this kind of goes back to, this is really an amendment to, we did, it's kind of like Mark had mentioned, where we had done a lot of a public outreach when we initially did this plan, which was five years ago-ish. And so we have it on our website currently, and like this meeting was, you know, notified on the public, on the state public notice website, on our website. The agenda's posted everywhere like that. So the public's been informed that it's been, that this is up for adoption tonight, or for your consideration. And, excuse me, the, so yeah, and they will have an opportunity to look at it as well. If, once it's adopted, it'll be posted on our website. We keep everything there so they can see.
Yeah, which I think I appreciate that. I'm just thinking from like a, you know, it's exciting, right? It's visionary, you know, that's what we talk about it as, you know, if I was a resident and I got some summary like, oh, look at the potential of this. Maybe that's also controversial, but...
Yeah, it's all right.
Yeah, and I think any, you know, any project that comes along obviously would go through a public process. If UTA comes through and says, we're doing X, Y, Z, it would go through the same, you know, same approval process as anyone else.
Thank you. Sorry. Have we had any public comments or feedback on this? Okay.
I don't know if you've received any emails. No. Yeah, the larger process that we went through in 2020 and 21, we had, I mean, several hundred survey responses and got a good sense of, you know, the concerns that people have are the same as, I'm sure you hear every week when you have the public commenting, but just making sure that all of those are documented as kind of part of this process.
Yeah, and sorry to belabor my previous point, but I'm just thinking, so if we asked for public comment, and we got input, and people gave feedback, and then only they would know, only way they would know that we did something would be if they looked on the webpage.
Sure. Yeah, it's the same with any planning document.
Yes, maybe, yeah, maybe it's neither here nor there. I just thought that would be a fun thing to announce.
Sure.
Anyway, we can move on.
So I want to address the comments on, the engineering comments, right, that mention in the staff report about UDOT and stuff like that. So there are two different things happening in the staff report there. There was the meeting that Mark had with UDOT, and then there was the engineering comments. The engineering comments are based on their experience with UDOT. So where it says in your staff report that UDOT doesn't like this, this will never happen kind of stuff, that's the opinion of the city engineer, not necessarily coming from UDOT entirely. I think that's what you're asking, right? Those questions that were kind of shown in the city's staff level review?
Yeah, that's the one I got.
Yeah, and yeah, so those are the opinions of that department based on their experience with UDOT as it stands today. And where Mark is coming from is he met with UDOT as well, their planning team, and that's where they kind of, so UDOT's a big organization, right? They have lots of employees. So you're gonna get differing answers from all over the place. So...
So it's not a hard no then?
I would say it's definitely not a hard no, but it's a, it's a...
It's okay. We can overcome hurdles.
Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to make sure that was clear, that like it's, it's not a hard no, but it's not an easy yes. There's a great big gray area, so.
That clarifies a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I think to follow up on that, we also met with representatives from the Salt Lake City Transportation Office, who went through a life on state process with UDOT. And so in this document, what we've spelled out here, these are the recommendations from another city who has been through this process with UDOT. She very much said, because we have a case study that we can take to UDOT and say, see, you did this in Salt Lake, and, you know, the city still functions, it's not burning down because those changes have been made. She said that that was a process that UDOT, you know, they were involved. It took a long time, but they got there. And so I think we're not saying that you're going to walk in the door and they're going to accept, but at least the door is open, and they said, yeah, we're open to it. But it's very much on the city's, you know, they said it's up to the city to kind of get that process going. They're not going to come to you and say, here's what we want to, what we want to do.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right. Our next... Oh. Is there a, sorry.
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comments. Any discussion amongst the commissioners?
I think it's a good plan.
I like it.
It's been in process for five years-ish. And you talk about public input, public has had a lot of opportunity to provide input, so I don't think I'm very concerned about more public input, so.
Okay. I was around in '21, so I'm glad. Thank you, though, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council to amend the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan to the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan as an amendment to the 2017 Murray City General Plan.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Hildreth to that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council to amend the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan to the Fashion Place West Station Area Plan as an amendment to the 2017 Murray City General Plan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, you have a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Horstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes. Awesome, thank you. All right, now moving on to our discussion and training items. The first one is the Salt Lake County Jordan River Recreation Plan. And Zach is gonna.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
This is a, the Jordan River Reconnect Program. We have two, two representatives, we have Brandon, and I'm going to butcher these names and I apologize, Brandon Beederman and Angelo Calasino with Salt Lake County, who's going to present what they've been working on. So I'll turn the time over to them and, yeah, they can hold on.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Angelo Calasino with Salt Lake County Parks and Recreation and appreciate your allowance to come here before you this evening to kind of update you on a plan that we've been working on for a few months now and coordinating with your planning staff and the four other jurisdictions within the study area. I don't know if you're familiar, back in 2022, the state legislature approved legislation, House Bill 173, basically designating a certain portion of the Jordan River corridor as a Jordan River Recreation Area Zone, and that extends from State Road 201 to 5400 South, which of course is in Murray, and then it includes four other cities, West Valley, Taylorsville, Mill Creek and South Salt Lake. And with that, we started working on a a plan, a master plan for that stretch of the river. The legislation calls out that linear stretch, but also 250 yards on either side of the river. And so we've, we've commissioned Port Planning Firm and a landscape architectural firm out of Philadelphia to come in and help us do this. And we feel like we're working for all five jurisdictions to kind of do a small area master plan, similar to what you just approved for your station, Fashion Place Station. So, but this is looking at that specific stretch of the Jordan River and that how it goes through each one of those jurisdictions and how we can probably improve it over time in multiple ways. And I'm going to turn the rest of the time over to Brandon Beederman to kind of give you an update and run through the plan as it has progressed and then the future schedule for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. Let me just put this into full screen. There it is, okay. Appreciate all of your time today. As Angelo mentioned, we're looking at this just to give you all a kind of an introduction to the plan and where we're at today, where we're going, so that we can get some upfront feedback as well. And then obviously looking forward to bringing kind of a more deep detailed plan forward as we progress through this schedule here. I think it might be reading a stream. Any thoughts there?
Weird. That's great.
I wonder if you have to reopen the PDF.
I might.
Looks like a PDF issue.
Perfect.
Now let's, yay.
Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that. So as Angelo had mentioned, you know, we're working for the Salt Lake County, but really see all of the jurisdictions, the Jordan River Commission and the other stakeholders as the primary, you know, as as clients of this. And so wanting to make sure we get this in front of you all. We're Port, we're a public realm landscape architecture and urban design practice. We are kind of leading this project with a fairly extensive team, but primarily working on this effort with us is Rio ASE, Applied Science and Engineering. There are hydrological engineer and ecology. And then we have Proz Consulting, which is a operations management and governance funding strategies consultant that works across the country on, you know, everywhere from state parks down to local park systems and municipalities. And then we have, again, a series of other consultants that we are using as advisory as as questions come up that help us ensure that this plan is, you know, technically feasible, et cetera. The quick agenda here is I'll run through the project schedule, I'll look at goals and priorities of the plan, we'll talk a little bit about the public outreach and the stakeholder engagement, and then kind of cover the conceptual framework plan as it exists today. Given time, it'll be a pretty high level plan, so I apologize if I go through this a little bit quickly, but obviously we can look forward to discussions or questions afterwards and then just to touch on next steps. So this project started back in 2024, and we really split this into two parts. The first part was really about visioning. This is an extensive community engagement process. We did a lot of on the ground work at that stage, which I'll share a little bit more about shortly. And then the part two started up in about June or late June, mid-June of this year of 2025 and runs into early 2026, and that's the part that we're in right now. This schedule is showing that second part, so parts three and four are that second phase. We've been working through these kind of concept frameworks are in front of you here today in November and in front of the other jurisdictions. And then we'll be really working through the details of the plan, the kind of final plan document, which we look to bring back in front, you know, in early 2026. We've been doing this with all of the kind of key stakeholders that we've identified for the project with the community. And we were able to with Soren present to the Technical Advisory Committee of the Jordan River Commission in in mid-October. We've done West Valley, actually a little bit earlier than that, we just did Taylorsville two nights ago, Mill Creek last night, and obviously a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. South Salt Lake did get pushed back since I submitted this PDF, it's now going to be December 4th. And then Soren has invited us to present in front of their governing board in early December. So we're hopeful that we're getting this in front of a lot of eyes, a lot of folks, and are able to get some really good feedback as we continue to move forward into the early 2026 plan completion. Angelo kind of ran through, ran through this, but it was really the the state legislature that set the the kind of project boundaries of this recreation area zone that that limits our focus or that sets our focus. This diagram is showing that extension from State Road 201 down to 5400 South. You're seeing the five jurisdictions, obviously, including a large portion of Murray on the kind of southeast side. The public engagement process, which I think you were provided the report that was issued at the end of last year from this, but basically we did a lot of kind of partnering with events that were happening and did a lot of on the ground kind of engagement with folks, with big boards, talking about what their experience with the Jordan River was and asking a lot of questions. We got a lot of really great feedback. That feedback was compiled and synthesized in that report and has really underlaid this plan. And we looked at it both in the context of where folks were talking about very specific items, as well as kind of the general overview that that people expressed in these conversations. And that really laid a foundation for us of looking at a connected, active and healthy river corridor and set the themes that have really underlined or underpinned this this kind of development as we've moved forward. So really looking at access, transportation and movement through the corridor, looking at the ecological habitat, the hydrology, the recreation and programming, both passive and active, and then really looking at the kind of long-term stewardship, the care, the management and the maintenance. And that kind of, this slide is breaking down a few of those categories, just so you can get a better sense of kind of what or how those buckets fit within these these kind of bigger buckets that we that we established. When we started back out this year, we thought it very important to get in front of all the jurisdictions. Again, as Angelo outlined, the county is is our client and our primary, our primary manager of this project, but they own a lot of the property, they don't have jurisdiction necessarily. So you all are folks that we want to ensure are having a voice in this plan. We started with your planning departments. We came through in July and we did a bunch of in-person workshops, sat down with a big drawing on the table and really asked, what are your current projects? What are your priorities coming up? What are your future and dream projects? We could record all that and documented all that. And that really underlaid a lot of the kind of themes and helped to find or revise or kind of, kind of focus in on these five themes. So again, active transportation, reverian and ecological function, passive and active recreation, and then management and safety was a big one that came up a lot. And thinking about how we can improve the visibility, improve awareness of this place and look at a more coordinated management and stewardship across this corridor. That all got synthesized, we worked with the county in a workshop, and that kind of further developed into what the plan is now. So I'll walk through this kind of in two fashions. One, kind of as our system-wide goals, and then two, kind of a little bit more focused on a series of sections. But we did also do a lot of research. We saw the Fashion, Fashion Place West Station Area Plan today. We looked at all the jurisdictional station area plans and the general plans, just to understand what is going on at that capacity from development and projects, to bring that all into the plan and ensure that we're working with those development opportunities and not contradicting or working against them. And the system-wide goals that we really set are connected communities, and we've heard a lot about this idea of having trails on both sides wherever possible, if not everywhere across this length, and really looking at improved public access points, not just for the public to be able to access the trail, although that's something we're really interested in ensuring there's a lot of great connections into that system, but also emergency services and and police presence to be able to have access to get on the trail and ensure that they're able to make sure that it's safe and make sure that people are able to get help when they need it. And again, just awareness that this amenity exists for these communities and it's a, it's a great asset that you all have here. And so just looking at the sections where we're exploring how we can add that second trail on opposite sides, where the big pink line is, is the side that doesn't have a trail system or designated Jordan River Trail right now. Looking at river, healthy river quarter, so how can we improve water quality? Obviously, it flows downstream, so we can only kind of work within the area we're in, but trying to do what we can within this area. And really looking at restored flood plain and increased riparian ecological enhancement and preserved habitat. One of the ways we can really do this is through these more expanded areas where there's publicly controlled land, so county, state or municipality land, which we've identified four areas that have a fairly wide width of corridor that allow for a little bit more potential within those areas. How is the river accessed? How are people able to recreate on it? Looking at that increased water access, we've identified the existing boat landings and existing get downs and or finding the gaps in which we can help to ensure that people can get kayaks in the water, get boats in the water, find a place to fish, et cetera. And then looking at the amenities that exist there and the kind of parks and the recreation areas that are there today, identifying the different programs that are there, the different amenities are there, and how can we build on what is there today and show some long-term vision to really be able to build this out into an extensive kind of community asset. And then the big one that has come up in a lot of our conversations with your planning department is really about operations and management. So thinking about how can this corridor be seen through a more singular entity of management? Murray is, you know, right now seen as the kind of the precedent for that. You all have a really well kind of maintained section of your river. Thinking about how can that kind of idea or that precedent extend across the full corridor? Looking at phaseable funding approaches and an implementation matrix that would start to outline priorities, responsibilities and funding sources, grants, et cetera, for both the capital projects and some of these more ongoing maintenance and programming costs. And just seeing the kind of boundary of of this kind of publicly controlled land within this area or publicly owned land. So that's really these kind of system-wide goals that we're looking at across the corridor itself to really start to establish an identity and start to establish a kind of continuity across it. As I mentioned, we also want to look in more specifically, so we've thought of this as a series of segments, more based on the themes that we started to see, both from the character of the space and the kind of projects that we were talking to the different jurisdictions about, less about jurisdictional boundary. So since we're working for the county, we have the ability to kind of look at this more holistically and taking everybody's kind of, your planning department's, you know, projects and goals and the other planning department next door and, you know, in Mill Creek and across the way in Taylorsville and thinking about how those start to actually work together. So we'll start at segment one. We're looking now, plan right is north. So this is 5400 South, you're seeing the area of Mill Race Park and Germania Park, and you've got a series of kind of soft trails through this area. The main Jordan River Trail is on the east side of the river that you're seeing in the kind of dark flash black line. And then there's some maintenance or or kind of soft trails that you're, that you have kind of existing to the, I guess, to the north and to the west of Germania Park there. Just some photographs of this, obviously, there's Mill Race, Mill Race across the, across the river, and then also the the Mill Race Pond and the kind of fishing piers. And really looking at some connect, connections into the neighborhoods here. So we were talking to Taylorsville about connecting up to the Jordan River Canal Trail, also looking at expanding on the Up and Out Corridor Trail, so you could get a viable kind of route from 5400 all the way up to 4350. And then also in this area, we have some capacity to, if you notice, if I flip back maybe two here, the river has been unnaturally straightened here. And so looking at how we can maybe bring back some of this historic meanders back to that and expansion of that flood plain through that area. So we've been working with our hydrological consultants and some ideas, and they've been being very mindful not to have this affect any infrastructure or any existing amenities, but work within the kind of space that's within that area and using LiDAR, on-the-ground research and field observation, finding those historic channels that used to exist to be able to start to reestablish that kind of more natural meandering, which would help with expansion of riparian ecosystems and flood, kind of a flood plain itself. On the left here is an example of a restoration they did in Greeley, Colorado, where a formerly straightened river was brought back to its natural meandering. And then thinking about how through these wetlands you could have, you know, boardwalks or other kind of opportunities for, you know, soft trails, et cetera, that build on what you already have there today, to be able to really experience that that kind of ecological amenity. Moving to the north, this is segment two. We call this, this is by the Little Cottonwood here, but there's the three, three parks right now, so thinking about them more as a whole. So you've got the the Confluence Park, you've got Little Confluence Trailhead and Arrowhead Park. They all have amenities, but they're not easily connected and they don't share the same amenities. So how can we think about these as more of a unified place to go where you can access each of the three, you know, a little bit more freely and take advantage of the amenities that exist there today? The Kennebec Nature Center is also in this area, which is obviously a big benefit for you all. So how can we ensure that that is is getting kind of a natural area around it to be able to be supportive of the the kind of students and public's, you know, endeavors as as they're taking advantage of that? And also then the trail is running on the east here and then it crosses after it gets across Murray-Taylorsville Road. These are just some quick pictures of some of the assets there. You've got a few shelters, you've got the bathroom, and then you've got parking at each of the three parks. So really thinking again about how you can unify those and and start to connect in on Murray-Taylorsville Road as a neighborhood connection and make this a a nice destination for folks in the area. And there's some opportunities here again where we're not necessarily changing the main channel in this area, but looking at side channels that start to expand that flood plain and improve ecological function and benefit here. You're seeing again the hydrological studies. One really great benefit here is you've got your pond here that is helping with stormwater filtration. We've heard it's been dredged quite a bit and and being able to have a little bit more of a flow through that will really help with the maintenance not being as frequent and having some more natural kind of movement through that pond. Just moving a little bit further north, this area is a little bit thinner of a corridor overall, thinking of this more just a habitat focus and trail focus. Again, the trail on here is on the west side, this goes past the Freedom Shrine. in the area. And there's some opportunities here again where we're not necessarily changing the main channel in this area, but looking at side channels that start to expand that flood plain and improve ecological function and benefit here. You're seeing again the hydrological studies. One really great benefit here is you've got your pond here that is helping with stormwater filtration. We've heard it's been dredged quite a bit and being able to have a little bit more of a flow through that will really help with the maintenance not being as frequent and having some more natural kind of movement through that pond. Just moving a little bit further north, this area is a little bit thinner of a corridor overall, thinking of this more just a habitat focus and trail focus. Again, the trail on here is on the west side. This goes past the Freedom Shrine, and there's also a couple of portages here. You're seeing just the two kind of varying degrees of, I guess, experience as you move through on that trail. You get kind of the more residential with the lawn area, and then you've got this area that's got the industry across the water. And bringing again both trails, trail to each side, so you get that kind of benefit for both sides, you get the, and one thing I forgot to mention before too, but a lot of this is also to start to create loops. So you don't have to do down and outs as much anymore, but you can start to have these different loops as you work through just to have a more useful experience along that line. And then the neighborhood connections that you're seeing here as well along the Big Cotton Wood and 5400. Moving to the north, this one is where all four municipalities come together. So you've got Taylorsville, West Valley, South Salt Lake and Mill Creek, and obviously Murray is just a hop skip away. So really thinking about this as an opportunity to again, start to think of these more cohesively as a unit. The trail continues on the west side here from the south as we continue north, crosses over and then goes under Meadow Brook Expressway and continues on the east side going north further. We've got the Mill Creek Trailhead and the General Home Park, which provides some picnic pavilions and a bathroom, and you've got the bridge going over, so you've got some assets here. But really thinking about taking that core of kind of more active programming and expanding that out into a more passive recreation or ecological kind of area. You've got so many municipalities coming here, this could be a really great kind of destination in the center of our overall project study area. There's also a lot of opportunity here because of the expansion of where the county land is, county and state land. And so thinking about how, again, you could start to look at some of these side channels and really create some areas of ecological benefit for both the flora and the fauna, wildlife, waterfowl, et cetera. There's also some connections here that we're looking at creating, one being right by General Home Park, being able to have a better trail access off of Carlisle Park Lane, and then looking at potentially connecting at Carlisle as an opportunity here. And then we're showing a new road connection that connects from Riverboat Road over to 3900 South, but more as a parkway that provides access to a potential, you know, as I mentioned, like thinking about these all four corners being activated for programming starts to give you opportunity on both sides for parking. And this is again, the diagram that our hydrological consultant put together from opportunities from looking at the LiDAR and where there's opportunities for these side channels. And you can see on the north side of Meadow Brook Expressway, being able to take advantage of that larger area, which is also something that we know has some encampment issues right now, and so starting to make that a little bit wetter provides obviously the ecological benefit, but also helps to prevent some of the encampment issues that are occurring there today. The further north here, this is a pretty limited area. This is where Tracy Aviary is. We've also met with Tim from Tracy Aviary and had some conversations with them and how we can be supportive of the efforts that they're undertaking here. And the trail runs on the east side here. It's again, it's a pretty tight corridor through here, so just looking at again, getting the trail connections in here and then getting some existing public access in here, and also working with South Salt Lake on this police substation that they're working through right now. A big part of this one here is, right now, there's a kind of, there's a limited ability to get off the trail as you move from coming into 3300 and continuing south. And so looking and working with South Salt Lake and working with Tracy Aviary at providing a little link so that you can get out to 3300 or access the trail from 3300 to help with some of the, kind of the safety issues that are occurring there today. The second to the last one, moving north, this is the kind of largest area that we have. This is a redwood conservation area. This is substantial portion of county land here. This area also is, the kind of north side of this area is designated as a wetland conservation area. So really trying to take advantage and think about that. One thing to note here is this is also where the federal jurisdictional levees come into play here. So you're seeing this trail here, if you can see my mouse. This is one of the levees, and then the levee is here, and this is where it kind of acts as a funnel as a channel gets pushed into the levees and moves towards the bypass. You've also got the amenities of the cultural, or the Utah Cultural Center. Just to the north, there's the REC Center that is looking currently under programming to be expanded or to be redone. So there's a lot of assets here that we could really, you know, build on. And so one of the things that we've been thinking about here, given the kind of wetland opportunities and the passive recreation and active recreation potential, is thinking about this as a county destination park, where you could really take on some, I think, some really interesting ability to capitalize on this land, this kind of larger natural area in the heart of these communities. So again, working with our hydrological consultant, you're seeing a lot of these side channels that could help to reactivate these wetlands. One of the things I didn't mention before is the Brighton Canal was filled in, so that no longer is providing a source for these wetlands, so they're losing their, the kind of natives are falling out and, you know, we're getting the kind of invasives back in. So, you know, being able to reestablish that would be a huge plus, thinking about program areas and opportunities, and then of course, the two-trail system, being able to move through here. The last one I'll mention is there's this Confluence Trailhead, that's a piece of land down here, and thinking about that as an access point or a nicer trailhead for South Salt Lake as a main point coming up from a Mill Creek connection or a connection along Mill Creek. You're seeing the studies that our hydrological consultant did here. We are, you know, looking at the potential to create a larger series of ponds in here that really are a nice habitat for wildlife or waterfowl, like migratory bird destination, et cetera. And also being able to create and recreate or reestablish that repararian and wetland ecology that was, you know, that, as this is a wetland conservation area. We've met with flood control, the county flood control, we've met with US Army Corps Section 404. We're working on getting a meeting with Section 408 and trying to kind of iron out some of the details of what this would look like from a recommendation. The last section that I'll highlight here, you're seeing State Road 201, which is the end of our project area to the north. This is the kind of a limited area because it's a straighter portion of the Jordan River within the levee system. The path is on the west side and you've got this maintenance trail that you're seeing in the dashed line on the east side. That's paved, so there's a really easy opportunity to convert that into one of the, part of the Jordan River Trail. And then there is a maintenance line that runs, oops, trying to go back, maintenance line that runs over to 900 West there along the canal, along Mill Creek. In the photo on the top, you're seeing the kind of industrial, South Salt Lake industry there. And so thinking about some ideas of how we could soften that edge, the bottom left picture is showing the kind of experience of that pavement right now. And then you're seeing Redwood Park, which is a pretty big park, but limited amenity there and how we could build on what's there to really expand that. So just again, thinking about that industrial landscape buffer that provides a little bit more of a nicer experience if you're using that trail, getting the two-trail system in, making these connections down to South Salt Lake so there's better access into this area. And then, oops, and then the, you know, Redwood Park and really thinking about how we could enhance and build on what's there. So zooming back out, that really set up a series of projects that we feel is really representative across the entire corridor. Each of these projects is something that right now is at a very high level. We wouldn't, you know, in a plan, a master plan of this scale, we wouldn't get into detail on any of these projects, but start to identify recommendations for each of these areas. Obviously with Murray having a considerable portion of jurisdictional kind of boundary across the area, there's a series of these different projects that are within your boundaries, which is, you know, obviously a reason to want to get in front of you all. Through all of this, we really feel like these are aligning to, and we try to keep our eyes on the themes that we heard from the community and ensuring that this is consistent with the message and the kind of, the wishes and desires and feedback that we received in our original engagement. So yeah, just touching on the schedule one more time, we're with you now, we're going to go through the rest of these jurisdictional boundaries. I'll point out at the top there, we've been working on developing online web materials, so all this information we are going to get on a web platform that is, that you're able to go through in a fairly interactive way. And then there'll be some opportunities for feedback, and that's what we want to try to get out. You know, we'll make sure that we share that with your planning department and they can share that with you, but ensure that gets out to your constituents, anybody that wants to know more about the plan or wants to provide any feedback, this would be a great place to do that. It'll also be, the link for this is on the county's website and it's on the Jordan River Commission's website. We've worked with Soren to get that on there as well. So I appreciate your time today. I hope I didn't go too fast through that, but please, any questions or comments for myself or Angelo, we're all ears.
Thank you. That was, that was great. I appreciate the background. Any questions or?
I do have a question. I think it's around the Redwood Park area that there is a low head dam in that area that you cannot...
Further downstream?
Yeah.
Right before the bypass?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, there is.
Is there a plan to remove that? Because I know we removed another one, like 43rd or something like that. Is there a plan to remove that?
My understanding is, and I'll let Soren or Angelo jump, or do you want to just jump in? You might know more about it than I do.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner. Thank you. Yeah, County, Salt Lake County Flood Control has been working with the Army Corps of Engineers because again, that also is still within the levees along the Surplus Canal and the diversion structure there that takes the water from the river and diverts it either into the river or straight down the Surplus Canal. And they've been studying it, the county flood control with some engineering staff and a consultant, has come up with a couple of different options to not technically take it out, but remodel it in a different way. So we still be able to get the water levels to back up, to go down the diversion structure, but not make a dangerous element like which is there now, which is basically a dam structure that when people try to go over it, they've been caught and so forth. But it's still in the process of being looked at. And there's also, I think, further discussion and review happening to see if it can possibly even be moved further downstream and down the Surplus Canal to allow a larger or a longer stretch of the Surplus Canal to possibly even be used for rowing, because there is a rowing contingent here in the valley.
Sure.
And they get out on the river and they would like to be able to have at least 2,000, I think it's 2,000 meters, to be able to row and practice and so forth. So I think that's in the discussions, but that's all with county flood control, and I'm not sure where that's at. But I've seen a couple of basic designs so far about changing the existing dam structure into what, basically they've done it Winchester Street, where it's basically just a drop weir, is a section of drop weirs, rock formations, so it just drops and people can kayak or canoe through it, but you can't actually row through it. So that's why I think they're studying a little bit further.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I think that there was some docks down by that Redwood Park where you could launch your boat, and I think they removed those?
Well, there was, for many years, there were three-tiered platforms. They've since been removed, and we are actually currently working on a boat launch, to put a boat launch in there, a permanent structure that could, at this point in time, the critical thing is to have an out, a takeout, because people are actually coming downstream from all of the additional boat launches and portages that we've installed upstream. And so before you get to the Surplus Canal diversion structure, we need a safe exit. And so we're in the process now of designing that. We're going through the review process with the Army Corps of Engineers to get that approved. But we're also looking at possibly adding a second type of boat launch there for rowers, for their skulls and so forth. So we're going to be probably looking at that here in the near future as well. But right now, we are working on an actual permanent ramp to have for a takeout right there.
Awesome.
And we're hoping to be able to construct that next year.
That's great. Thanks.
I have a question. I know this is more of a high-level view here, but one of the concerns that I've heard with respect to safety and trying to mitigate these areas to be, become accessible or develop homeless encampments, that sort of thing, is it responsibility of each city's jurisdiction and police force to kind of maintain that, or is that kind of, how is, how do you envision that occurring?
Are you speaking specifically about enforcement or about design strategies to help with that?
Kind of all of the above, you know, speak to that to the extent that you can, I guess.
Yeah, so from a design strategy standpoint, that is something that we'll be incorporating into the plan, and that ranges from everywhere to, you know, and we talked about having maintenance be more of a single entity. So I think an example is as a Murray, there tends to be better trees being limbed up and kind of lower, and you've got your kind of four to eight-foot kind of view threshold. Obviously that helps a lot with safety because you can see, right? There's also the idea that having a trail on both sides doesn't necessarily provide a physical access to somebody that might be on the other side, but it provides visual access, which again, helps with safety. So there's these layers of strategies. The other big one is public access points, so providing access points for more people to get to the trail and therefore being used more helps, you know, again, with making it not maybe a place you want to be from an encampment standpoint. But also, and actually it was the South Salt Lake Sheriff that called these public access points, which we've taken on because we like that term, because it is both access for the public, but, you know, they were talking, the sheriff was talking about how, you know, a lot of times it's hard for them to get to the trail and they have to go down the trail for a long ways before they can get to anybody. So thinking about how more of those will help, you know, your enforcement and the other jurisdictions enforcement get there more frequently. So yeah, there's more thought that we need to put into that, and we've been, you know, obviously hearing a lot about that. A suggestion that came out of, I think it was a meeting last night with Mill Creek, it might have been the one before, there's a number of these in a row, but, you know, just even the idea of having, right now there's mile markers along the trail, but even starting to designate 10th mile markers provides an easier access for somebody to call in and report, you know, a safety concern or an emergency. And so again, just ensuring that there's a number of these layers to help with that. So that's from the design side, which is obviously what we can control. But yeah, from the enforcement, I mean, it is your police forces that are the ones behind that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so I have seen Murray police on bikes, I think, in Murray. Is that, so does each city have, you know, a time period where they're on bikes out, you know, on the trail? And is that part of what you're saying in terms of it's, it could be more coordinated around the timing and additional?
Do you have an answer for that? I don't know what each of the jurisdictions are doing from a standpoint of how they're policing the space. What I will offer is South Salt Lake's Sheriff's Department put together actually a really helpful report for us that just outlined kind of some of the challenges that they're having, so that we have something that we're like, oh, we know now where they have trouble getting to, we know where they're, I'm seeing issues of encampment, we know where they're seeing safety concerns being reported more frequently, which helps us in the design phase to be able to really think about that. I mean, it's something that we'll reach out to each of the planning departments to ask for, because when that got sent to us last week and I was like, wow, this is, this is actually really helpful for us to be able to hear directly from them since they're the ones on the ground. I don't know though, how frequently that they're, what each jurisdiction is planning from a time standpoint of that, but if you want to, if you have anything to add, don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, it's okay.
Hi, I'm Soren Simonson. I'm the Executive Director of the Jordan River Commission. And, you know, public safety is one of the really major concerns that we hear about, and it ranges from homeless activity, drug activity, people going really fast with all of the proliferation of e-bikes and all kinds of devices that move really fast, and sometimes they're quiet, not like a gas motor, a gas motor that's really loud. And so each jurisdiction maintains their own law enforcement. The bill that Angelo referenced earlier that created the Jordan River Recreation Area, there was also some significant funding that was attached to that. It's just been in place for a few years, and that funding is distributed by the Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands and the law enforcement program that was recently consolidated within the Department of Natural Resources. So they distribute funds to improve and step up patrols around the Jordan River, and that's happening in each jurisdiction. They kind of deploy funds to the communities where it's needed the most. And as you can imagine, the communities that are feeling the biggest impact are the ones that house significant social services, the Pamela Atkinson Homeless Resource Center in South Salt Lake, the other resource centers in Salt Lake City and some of the other service providers. So there is a coordinated effort that's happening on that front. There are a lot of ideas that have come out of this about how to support that, from being able to better report incidents, being able to identify where you are if you're somebody that's passing by and see something and wants to say something and you call 911, 911, but you don't know exactly where you are, that's a challenge. So there's a coordinated effort, the commission, under the guidance from our governing board and our technical committee, are right now working on ways to kind of step up some of that activity and making it easier to patrol, making it easier to report and identify location, and also maybe creating some coordinated response about how do we set common standards when you've got almost 20 different jurisdictions with their own law enforcement and they each adopt their own policies around what's motorized and how do you define, you know, their speed limits? Several cities have posted speed limits recently on the Jordan River Trail. So we're trying to coordinate those efforts, make it easier... uh, make it easier. And each jurisdiction ultimately, uh, makes their own decisions, but we're trying to define some best practices, uh, that kind of go in parallel with a lot of the work that's been going on around this plan. I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Thank you. Um, uh, one other question. So I love the idea of like better mile markers so you can kind of know where you're at. Um, I spent a lot of time on the trail and, you know, I'm in sections that's not in this, this discussion, but one thing that I've noticed at least when you go further south is there, you know, sometimes when there's junction points, I don't know exactly, it's not clear where to go. Um, you may have mentioned, you know, making it more clear in the, the area to the south. But then also wondering if, is there anything to paint on there or put on the actual trail to make that more clear? Have you had any discussion around that?
Sure. A great question. If you're not familiar, uh, there was a comprehensive sign, uh, package that was prepared multiple years ago and the entire 45 mile stretch of the river, uh, was installed with the comprehensive sign with directional signage, uh, mile markers and actual, uh, boundary markers for each city. And part of that package did include markings for the asphalt to help with this exact subject that you mentioned about directing to, you know, a stub or a little trail to go to the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the funding was not there to be able to install all those, but we did the best that we could with as many directional signage signs that we could and so forth. And there are areas that now have improved or changes. For instance, we just finished, uh, the new trailhead at Thirty Ninth South, the Mill Creek Trailhead. And of course, there was no signage there to begin with. And now we had to, part of that project, we added new directional signage. But that's exactly what we're trying to do to continue and improve that as we go along. So thank you though.
Yeah. No, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Um, excuse me. On page seven of your deck, you mentioned a, uh, single entity management oversight. Um, I don't know, I don't see that entity reference in here. And I'm just wondering, uh, do we know who that is? Has it yet to be created?
Um, so that is something that, um, our, our Pro's Consulting is currently working on. Um, it was kind of something that we, we got this kind of front part and they, they've started to, um, kind of kick in to really work through this now. Um, the practice can come from a bunch of different sources. Um, the way that we've been talking about it is that it would be a, a body, an advisory body that would have representatives from all, um, you know, all the jurisdictions and all the stakeholders. It would have representatives from the technical advisories, which would be DNR state, you know, uh, forestry, fire, state lands. It would be flood control, et cetera. Um, obviously the Jordan River is a, is a major entity that looks at the entire stretch of this. Um, we've obviously been engaged in, in, in conversations and what that might, might or might not look like, but that's something that we're working towards right now. Um, so the short answer is no, there's, there's not one right now. I think it also has to do with funding. Um, that's a really big part of it is where does the kind of funding for that kind of continual operations come from? Um, I would have more information for you if, if my consultant, Brian, was here. Um, they do this though, for a lot of different park systems and are kind of, um, be putting together some, some recommendations from that standpoint right now.
Okay. Is this something that has to come to fruition by statute? Or is this like something that's an idea as part of this? I'm just curious the, how this is coming into be, if that makes sense?
Um, well, so this would, the, the, the plan itself would be basically a series of recommendations. Um, and those recommendations will come through a, a matrix that we'll be putting together that helps to try to identify the likely, um, agency that would have oversight of that. Uh, because this ranges from both capital projects as well as, you know, again, operations management and other structures for that. Um, so, you know, in the end, um, you know, the, the, the plan will kind of outline who and what entities we, we think, you know, would be the best to be able to support that. Um, and it'll be kind of up to the county and, and again, some of the funding sources to be able to, um, push that forward to make that come into play or come into fruition.
Okay.
And I don't know if any of you want to add anything to that?
Um, and then I had, uh, excuse me, a different question on page seven. Uh, it mentions the 250 yards extended. Um, it sounds like, was that the House bill that made that happen? Or is that something that's yet to happen? And my, my overall question is, I'm wondering if that's going to cause any displacement of any kind of neighborhoods or anything like that?
The 250, um, is, was a designation that came through in the state legislation. Um, we are responding to that more by, and that's where you saw that pink boundary, um, if I move forward here. Um, our kind of viewpoint of this is we're looking, um, at basically the publicly controlled lands as the primary area in which we're operating from a, from a capital improvement or a physical kind of improvement area. Um, there, there may be recommendations in there for how partnerships could exist with entities. So obviously getting a trail on both sides. In some cases, there's not really a lot of room there. You know, there are opportunities, for instance, to, um, ask for easements for that trail to go through or look at potential land swaps. I mean, these will be recommendations that are made in the plan. That won't be, um, part of a, uh, they won't, they would become a separate project that would have to go through a community engagement and approval process for that to actually be formalized. Um, but for the most part, we're looking within this body of an area for direct, um, let's say, kind of transformation while looking actually even further outside of that 250 to understand the connections for it. So like the Jordan River Canal Trail as an example is outside of the 250 yards. But from us, our perspective, that's a really important, um, kind of circu- uh, circulatory, um, asset to be able to ensure we're connecting to in some way.
Okay. So the goal of that is, is that's is all public lands essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Public, yeah, publicly controlled lands. Yep.
Does, does your plan also include, um, ideas for improving like storm retention basins? The one I'm thinking of in particular is at the, um, Rio Tinto Nature Center in Murray. Um, it's been there a long time. Uh, pretty much, hmm, probably half overgrown since, uh, it was originally put in. So does plan take in account, uh, repairing those, upgrading those, renovating those?
I don't, I wouldn't say specific to like an entity that exists, but I think in general, um, there will be, uh, so one, the idea of the expanded flood plain and looking how we can create a, a more healthy, uh, waterway through this area. You know, moving, moving water obviously provides a lot of benefit, uh, to prevent, um, that from occurring as quickly. Um, we will highlight recommendations for how storm water might enter into it, but the plan doesn't have the capacity to identify every utility structure and like where that would go and how, how that might, um, operate specifically. So again, it'll, it'll look at recommendations to be able to, um, to set that up, but it wouldn't actually like start to identify all of those. Um, those get a little too specific for the scope of this, of this project.
Brandon, let me just add to that.
Yeah, please. Thank you, Ned. That's a great question. And, um, there are two documents that already exist. You might be familiar with these. One of them is the Blueprint Jordan River, which was created in 2008 and updated in 2022. And then the Jordan River Commission's Best Practice Guidebook for River Oriented Development. Both of those contain a lot of high level strategies around managing storm, stormwater systems. We know that they're prolific around the Jordan River, probably thousands of stormwater outlets, either directly into the river or into a tributary or into a wetland area. Uh, you know, when we started paving things a hundred years ago, you have to do something with the water and, and, uh, that's a com- complex, complicated system. Um, there is a lot of work that's happening around stormwater system best practices and development. And that, that is a major focus of the Jordan River Commission. There may be some ideas that could be, uh, encompassed within the planning for some of the parks in this plan, but it's a more comprehensive and, and complex system that will probably require more, uh, thought and, and focus than what this plan is, is focused on right now.
I can think of a half a dozen of those, Soren. And I'm one, who has the responsibility for those or who, um, who would pay for a renovation or an upgrade of those facilities?
So specifically related to stormwater, that's managed through the MS4 Permit Program, which resides with each municipality that has a stormwater system, and they all do. Uh, it's regulated by the Division of Water Quality at the state level, which is it with, within the Department of, of Environmental Quality. So I believe most cities now, uh, South Salt Lake was, I believe, the last one that in, incorporated a, uh, a fee program for stormwater as part of their public utilities program. Murray City has one. You have an active, uh, stormwater program within your public works. And, um, and, and they are required to, uh, continue to look at best practices at improving water quality through that non-point source program that's connected to the stormwater system. So that program exists already. Uh, it, it will continue to be something that's monitored closely from a water quality standpoint. And the programs that are developed by each municipality obviously are part of a bigger system that benefits the entire river and everything downstream. But that's Murray City Public Works and the MS4 Permit Program are where stormwater is managed actively within the city. And that's probably the best place to deploy some of those ideas related to stormwater management.
I guess I have one more. So at the confluence of Little Cottonwood and the Jordan River, uh, this is really in Taylorsville. It's right on the border of Taylorsville and, and Murray. Um, since I've lived here, I can remember at least three times that I don't know who does it. Well, the county does it in some fashion, dredges that corner or that confluence. So, um, that park was also supposed to be a, a takeout for, um, kayaking, which it, it is kind of, there aren't really any facilities there. However, uh, my real question is how does that, that river, that confluence is always going to, uh, be clogged by gravel? So this last time they've done it was, um, this past summer and I don't know how many cubic, tens of thousands of cubic, um, yards of, of gravel was taken out. How would this plan address that? I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna happen forever. So.
I mean, one of the ways is with a lot of the expansion or I guess re-establishment of the meanders and the kind of expanded floodways that we were showing, uh, up, uh, upriver, um, so that you start to have a lot of that settlement come out prior to arriving to that. Um, obviously we're only dealing with a smaller section and a lot of that's coming, you know, further upstream, which is, is out of our direct control. Um, that specific, we, we were looking at a couple of options there, but that specific area, when our, when we had our conversations with County Flood Control, um, they see that as actually an opportunity for a lot of that settlement to happen before it continues to go downstream. And so, um, part of that system is, is something flood control, um, wants to keep in a, in a way. Um, I think the hope is, is that with some of these meanderings upstream, um, that that will get reduced. To what effect is, is hard to say, you know, without kind of letting that play out. Um, but that is again, a big part of why we're looking at these, um, these kind of, uh, let's just say, the, the kind of improvements to the floodway and to the waterway, um, throughout the system, throughout the corridor that, you know, again, that this project is focusing on.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, sorry, Brad.
No, please.
Yeah, appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we have our last agenda item. Um, this is the Open and Public Meetings Act training. And Mark Richardson is going to be presenting.
Yes, he is. Cause I'm not him. And no, nope, nope, nope. You are more than welcome.
You could co-present.
No, no.
I know this is what you've really been waiting for, uh, for the meeting tonight. So, um, anyone who has been on the commission for a while has heard this same presentation. Uh, you have to get it every year. So you could probably give it. Um, those of you who are new, it will be new. And in the next few years, you'll be able to give it too. Unfortunately, there's not a lot that changes from year to year, uh, with the Open and Public Meetings Act. So I think I do have one new slide this year. Um, for those of you that have seen it before, you can watch for that. But, um, you are required as a member of a, of a public body, uh, to receive annual training on the Open and Public Meetings Act. Um, so like I said, we do this, um, annually. As I'm going through, please, if you have any questions, feel free. Uh, so the, the basic idea behind the Open and Public Meeting Act is that, uh, the government should do its business openly, should be transparent, and people should see, uh, what, what takes place so that nothing is done kind of behind closed doors. So that's, uh, the, the reason behind the, the act. Uh, openly refers to, um, the, uh, action that this body takes, um, uh, needs to be done just where, where people can participate and see. So we have often the citizen comment here, uh, periods. Uh, people are welcome to come and, and be here, um, and they make their comments. However, just because they're here doesn't necessarily mean they can, can take any time they want or say any time they want, but they do have the right to be here. Um, and, uh, can, can provide comments when they're invited to do so. But, um, for the purpose of the, of the Open and Public Meetings Act, a meeting is the convening of a public body, basically to do anything that is within the scope of the authority you've been given as the planning commission. Um, the convening of a public body with a quorum present, um, to take action on some official item. Uh, like it says, irrelevant matter is just anything that's within your scope. So we, we always say that, uh, you, if you are together as a group, uh, that's, that's a meeting if you're discussing business. So social gatherings are not necessarily a meeting. If the seven of you happen to be somewhere at another city function or something, just the fact that you're together doesn't make it a meeting. However, we always caution you, if you start to talk about items that are on an agenda or could be on an agenda, you could turn it into a situation where, uh, you've now created a meeting. So just when you see each other, don't, uh, I guess, don't talk shop, uh, outside of the meetings. Quorum is usually defined as a simple majority unless it's otherwise defined by law. The quorum of the planning commission is four of you. Um, we are required to notify the public, the planning commission and all, uh, public bodies for the city publish and publish an annual schedule of when the meetings will be held. In addition, we also publish, um, notice before each meeting with the agenda, the date and time, and the, the information that people need to know. I can't see too many situations where this would happen with the planning commission, but there is the option, uh, where you don't need to give that notice in an emergency situation and in the process for that. Again, I can't see the planning commission having too many emergencies that would require a, a meeting without that. But the agenda is, uh, something that needs to show basically that somebody could look at an agenda and have an idea of what is going to be on the meeting. So they know what's going to be presented. Each topic is listed, uh, as a separate item. You've seen and we, it, it happens quite often that perhaps an issue or an item or a question that's not necessarily on an, on an agenda can come up, can be brought up at the chair's discretion. Uh, something that's not on the agenda could be discussed. However, no, no formal action can be taken if something is not, not on the agenda. Again, something I don't think very likely to happen with the planning commission. Um, I suppose it could, but, uh, there is, uh, the provision that allows for closed meetings in certain circumstances. And there's a process you have to go to, uh, to have a closed meeting. In an open meeting, you have to have a quorum present. Two thirds of the members would vote to close the meeting. Um, the, um, reason for closing the meeting, uh, who voted and how you voted would be, would be recorded. Um, but again, during a, a closed meeting, you can't take any official action. You can't do your votes, uh, or make anything formal. It has to be done in an open, open part of the meeting. The reasons where you can close a meeting typically deal with discussions about individuals, uh, strategy for litigation, real estate transactions. So again, I don't know that it would, I don't know, I'm not aware of us ever closing a planning commission. I can't think of one. So, um, minutes for a closed meeting, it shall be recorded, uh, written minutes may be detailed. Uh, there are some exceptions when you wouldn't, uh, keep a recording of that, but you also would swear an affidavit as to what took place in that meeting. Uh, records and notes of a closed meeting are considered a protected record under grandma. We saw with COVID, electronic meetings that were very popular. There's kind of two options, electronic meetings with an anchor location. Uh, that would be a situation where you've got people here, but maybe someone from the planning commission, uh, is away and still wants to participate. That's only to participate. That's only authorized if they have, if you have a rule that allows for it. I don't know that the Planning Commission does. Actually, don't, they do. We don't encourage that, obviously. But also with COVID, we saw a lot of electronic meetings without an anchor location where everyone was just virtual. There is a process for that if the chair makes a finding that it's not safe to meet together. Hopefully, we don't have another situation in COVID like that. But the, the chair would just make a statement saying it's not safe, and you'd have to provide notice for how people can participate. I think when, when it first started, one of those determinations could last forever. The legislature pulled that back a little bit, and a determination like that is only good for 30 days, and then you'd have to reissue another statement. Again, hopefully, we don't have to deal with that again. But predetermining action is prohibited. This seems fairly straightforward, but you can't get together beforehand and decide what you're going to do in the public meeting. That is improper. Enforcement, people are allowed to participate and be in the meetings. However, if someone is disrupting a meeting to the point where they're not allowing the meeting to go forward, they can be asked to leave. We can require them to leave. Any action taken in violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act can be voidable, and there are enforcement options through the Attorney General, the district attorney. You'll see at the bottom, violation of a closed meeting is a Class B misdemeanor. People can also sue privately to, to undo an action that you take if it violates the meeting. One thing I did want to mention, I don't have a slide for it. We've talked about this before. It's kind of related to the last slide in the Open and Public Meetings Act. But that is the, having communication with people outside of this meeting who, not necessarily on the Commission, members of the public or people that want to talk to you about an issue that's coming up. One of the things that's important with, with these boards is maintaining impartiality and integrity, and that all the decisions that the Planning Commission makes are based solely on what's presented here in the meeting. So we talk about ex parte communication, speaking with someone outside of the meeting directly or indirectly about something that may be on the agenda or may be coming up. Just be aware that people that come and present at the Planning Commission, they, they have this due process right, where everyone involved should have the same opportunity to hear and present the evidence at the same time. So again, your decisions are supposed to be made on what happens here on the record. So again, if, I also recognize you're out in the public, and people are going to want to come talk to you. So we just said in the past, if that happens in the communication, let them know you're not allowed to talk about it outside of a meeting. And probably the appropriate thing to do at that point is to, at the meeting, mention that the communication occurred, if there was anything substance disclosed, so that everyone can have the benefit of that same information. Or if it was to the point where you didn't feel you could set that information aside, you'd, you'd recuse yourself. So that's just something we mention occasionally. That, in a nutshell, is the Open and Public Meetings Act. So any questions?
I have a question. So Mark, how does our pre-meeting fit into this Public Meetings Act since if we don't have a quorum, we'll know before we get there, probably we'll cancel the meeting?
Yeah.
There isn't any public comment?
No.
And there's no action taken by our committee. So how does, how does that particular meeting fit into this bigger Public Meetings Act?
Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's posted that we meet for a pre-meeting at 6 o'clock. People are welcome to attend. Again, like we said before, people are welcome to attend meetings. That doesn't necessarily mean they always get a chance to speak.
Any, I mean, since we don't take a vote in there, we don't take any action?
No, it's more just a
We have discussion, but it's, like you said, it's open.
It's kind of similar to the discussion you just had with the Jordan River Committee. It was just a discussion. I don't know actions taken. It's just to kind of go through things before the meeting. So.
Okay. I like your slides.
Yeah, they're very dark.
You'll see them next year.
Is this a new slide deck?
This one is not the new slide, no.
Well, it's the same one.
Well, the background's different.
The background's new.
I changed some of the wording in the background and sent through in a new slide there.
I just have a question. Is there a reason why we do, we don't do this at the beginning of the year, like when a new commission member is put in, and they have to wait a whole year until they get instructions?
It's always just kind of fallen this time of the year. I don't know why we do it that way.
Okay.
Just, I come when I'm invited.
You can read those slides anytime you want.
Maybe people have been talking to their neighbors all year long because they just didn't know.
Oh, to be honest, I think it's kind of, we all realize, oh my gosh, it's October, and we haven't done it yet. So let's do it.
I think there's nothing else on it.
Maybe we should like move it to like July, and then to May.
Are you asking to have it again in January?
No, I don't want it in January.
I'll have him come do it again in January.
Maybe in the next three years, we slowly scoot it forward.
I think Jake wants to hear it again.
I think these slides might be in the packet that we got at the beginning of our terms as commissioners.
Yeah, I was about to say, I, this is all from here.
But it was during COVID, and no one could touch anything or do anything. So that might be a good reason why.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, that is our
Mr. Chair, could we vote to have two of these meetings a year?
You can vote. I don't know that it'll pass, but.
Okay, I won't make, I won't make any motions.
All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, fine. I won't talk.
Oh, sorry, no.
No, it's fine. I really don't have anything. We'll have something on December 4th. It's kind of a heavy agenda. It's becoming that anyway. So, yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you say? What agenda?
It's, it's, well, you can kind of see it there. We have one, two, three, four, five, five things on it. So let me know early if, if, if you're not going to be able to make it. Packages will be coming out sooner because they're due next week. And so since next week is also Thanksgiving, you'll probably get your packets on like Wednesday. So.
Sounds good.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Now, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn 807.
We are adjourned 807. Thank you.